Let's turn then to item nine on the agenda. This is proposed first reading of an ordinance of the city adding chapter 6.09 to title six of the Pasadena Municipal Code, which would require all dogs and cats within the city to be spayed or neutered. This is a subject that has engendered considerable public interest. We have a number of messages that have been arrived electronically in the last 72 hours or so. I assume other member council, other council members have received them electronically. And of course, the city clerk has gathered all of those communications and distributed them to the council in hard copy. We turn to Mr. Mermel, Assistant City Manager, for a presentation on what is involved in this ordinance. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. This matter, as you indicated, does come from the, through the Public Safety Committee and previously came to the council. In December of 2012, in response to concerns of growing concerns over public safety regarding dangerous dogs, the Public Safety Committee with the help of the Humane Society began exploring the issue of dangerous dog breeds and whether it would be possible to regulate particular breeds in some fashion. The California Health and Safety Code prohibits specific breed-specific regulations and instead ultimately what came forward is a recommendation to spay and neuter all dogs and cats, and I'll explain why that's where the recommendation went. But again, our overview, based on the recommendations from the Pasadena Humane Society as it relates to the issue, staff does recommend, and the city attorney has prepared an ordinance for the council's consideration this evening, a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance that would apply to all cats and dogs over the age of four months, and it would establish certain exceptions to the mandate. In reviewing the issue of dog attacks, children are most at risk. Typically, it's those that are 12 and younger. Also, there seems to be a tendency in lower-income neighborhoods where dogs are more likely to bite, based on the data that the Health Department was able to pull together. Intact males represented 70 to 76 percent of the reported dog bite incidents. Also, females who have pups are protecting the animals or perceive a threat are more likely to bite. And there's also evidence to show that dogs that are tethered in a yard are often more likely to be aggressive. And so again, the issue is really unsterilized dogs are more aggressive in general. And so the recommendation for spay and neuter is born out of that to try to minimize the risk to public safety. And also sterilization of dogs and cats is an effective means to address population control. We do have representatives from the Humane Society with us today who can talk about how our facility here locally is literally bursting at the seams with unwanted dogs and cats, and it is an issue for our community. An overpopulation of stray animals can lead to diseases in the broader community. So again, the ordinance that's before you this evening is, and it has gone to, it came through the Public Safety Committee on June 17th. That was when it was presented. It, the city council on July 8th unanimously directed the city attorney's office to prepare the ordinance. It does include some exceptions, dogs which are unable to be spayed or neutered because it would cause them harm, dogs are used by law enforcement agencies, service or assistance animals. And the ordinance that's before you this evening includes dogs that compete. We've seen some inquiries from, from community members asking about cats, and I believe the city attorney's office has prepared a modification to the proposed ordinance this evening that if the council was interested, would extend this exception to show cats. And again, here was our timeline in June. The recommendation was approved by the Public Safety Committee. July, the city council unanimously directed the city attorney's office to prepare the ordinance, and here we are this evening for your consideration. And myself, representatives from the Pasadena Humane Society, Steve McNaul and Elizabeth Campo, as well as Angelica Palmeros from the Public Health Department are here this evening to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Madison, do you have questions?
Well, really just a comment to echo Steve. I mean, I've been someone that's been outspoken about this. At the Public Safety Committee hearings, we talked about data that shows that approximately 4 percent of the dogs in the U.S. are pit bull breeds. And 50 percent, at least 50 percent of the fatal dog attacks on humans are caused by pit bull breeds. And there's just no sound public policy reason why a community like Pasadena shouldn't be allowed to ban such dangerous animals. And I'm tempted to say this is timely because 10 days ago in Colton, a two-year-old boy was, and this is strong language, but this is why we're here, a two-year-old boy was literally ripped apart by pit bulls and killed. Little time before that, there was an attack in Corona. There was another attack in Corona earlier this year, and a 60-year-old woman was killed. So I mean, this is gonna happen in Pasadena if we don't do something about it. And unfortunately, because of the constraints of state law, we have to be somewhat overbroad, although the testimony that we've heard, I think, from the Humane Society, and when you talk about the number of dogs who have to be put down, and cats, and the overpopulation, I think there's some beneficial public policy there too with a law like this. So I think we should, we should adopt this ordinance, and we should also be pursuing in Sacramento, a wake-up call to the state legislature so that local communities can decide whether or not they want to have, you know, these pit bulls that cause such a disproportionate share of fatal and severe injuries on humans. They're just, they are a much, much, much more dangerous breed, period. No right-thinking person could deny that. And sadly, they've also become associated, in some cases, with sort of gang culture. And the idea of an unneutered male pit bull who's been bred for thousands of years to be a killer is gonna kill, whether it's another animal, or again sadly, like just happened in Colton, a two-year-old boy, or any number of cases. So I'll stop. I think you know how I feel about this, but this is a start, and I think we should continue to pursue this. The state law makes no sense.
We do have requests for public comment, but Steve, let me ask if other communities have considered and adopted ordinances of this kind?
Yes, Los Angeles County would be the most preeminent in our area, as well as another of, a number of other cities, Agora Hills, Artesia, Bradbury, La Puente, Linwood, Santa Clarita, Walnut. And again, it does apply to our adjacent unincorporated areas in LA County.
That is all breeds, not pit bulls specifically.
Mandatory spay and neuter.
Yes, thank you.
So should we go to public comment, and I'm sorry, Mr. Tornay?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm anxious to hear what public speakers have to say. I'm sympathetic to what Steve has said in terms of the pit bull problem. The difficulty that we're confronted with is that we, we have to come at that problem because of the limits of state law in an indirect way. And as Steve suggested, it may be an overbroad way, but it seems to be the, the only available option to us. I frankly was surprised that there wasn't, when we heard this matter initially and directed staff to prepare a, city attorney to prepare an ordinance, that there wasn't more pushback from the public, because I feared that this would engender a lot of opposition, and now I think we're finally starting to see it. And I, and I think apart from the individual opposition, we appear to have correspondence just received in the last little bit from a variety of responsible and knowledgeable agencies and organizations. So I'll withhold my comments until we hear the, the public hearing. I mean, but I think we're really, or the public comment, but I think we're really in a, in a tough place here in terms of trying to address a very real problem and finding the best way to, to achieve that.
Very well, the first speaker is Florence Bleacher from Los Angeles. Ms. Bleacher?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm with a group called California Responsible Pet Owners Coalition, and I would like to read our letter into the, into the minutes of the meeting, if I may. California Responsible Pet Owners Coalition is writing to you on behalf of Pasadena's responsible dog owners and breeders. We are writing to express our concerns regarding the proposed changes to Pasadena's Municipal Code requiring all dogs and cats within the city to be spayed or neutered. The underlying premise of this proposal is flawed. Current studies discard the contention that sterilization uniformly reduces aggression and improves the health of animals. These studies not only show increased temperament problems as a result of juvenile gonadectomy, but other skeletal and health issues as well, including increased incidence of cancer as a result of these surgeries. Just as humans need our hormones to develop properly, so too does it apply to juvenile animals. Mandatory spay and neuter laws fail in their effectiveness because they do not address the underlying issue of irresponsible pet ownership. Ownership issues are best addressed through education. It is incorrect to assume that there will be no additional costs as a result of this proposal. Many owners cannot afford the cost of sterilizing their animals and will surrender them to Pasadena shelters only to be cared for at taxpayer expense. Owners may also decide not to vaccinate for rabies or provide other general medical care for their pets as a means of avoiding compliance with MSN ordinances. This information is supported by analyses by the American Veterinary Medical Association. Mandatory sterilization of owned animals is opposed by the American Veterinary Medical Association, the AKC, and the ASPCA. Four-month-old dogs are too young to compete in AKC, UKC, ADBA, or other approved registry events. They are not structurally or temperamentally ready for such competitions. We live in earthquake and fire territory where natural disasters can occur without warning. Accidents happen, walls tumble down, fences crumble, animals become frightened and flee. Also, there are occasionally delivery people who might not close a gate securely, or Fourth of July fireworks may startle an animal. To punish a valuable dog and its owner for mother's nature's whims or others' carelessness is unreasonable. Local breeders provide wonderful support to their communities. They educate and help their puppy owners, they raise and breed health-tested, well-cared-for animals. They are assets to our communities. California Responsible Pet Owners Coalition respectfully urges you to reexamine this matter. We urge you to work with the American Kennel Club to craft reasonable, enforceable laws that address problems of irresponsible pet ownership in the city of Pasadena. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We turn then to Sarah Bixler. Ms. Bixler?
I've lived in the city of Pasadena for decades, and I do not believe that the city of Pasadena has an area where they have dogs, that many dogs, like they do where they killed that two-year-old boy in Corona, was it? I, you know, I, it's just not there. Neighbors would complain, they call the city, they call the Pasadena Humane and inform them that there, there's a problem with these, you know, four or five pit bulls. Actually, that isn't what I was gonna say. What I was gonna say is I, I'm against the ordinance, but I believe that a more successful method of achieving more spaying and neutering of cats and dogs is to address the issue by the grassroots. I think that, I have been informed that the Pasadena Humane no longer has the spay-a-thons they used to have, and I think they should resurrect them and have them again, and then disseminate information among the general population, Pasadena, to let them know when the dates and times of the spay and neuter clinics. And this would be best achieved by a monthly newsletter from the Pasadena Humane Society similar to this, Pasadena-focused, and receiving this information regularly would allow residents to plan the neutering of their pets, as well as being reminded of the service. Additional information on the flyer could be where other, where there are clinics where their pet could be spayed or neutered for free or for low cost. And we could also go through to the different veterinary clinics and ask them to give a free, free spay or neuter once a month. Then Banfield has, they have a, Petco, Petsmart has Banfield in them, and they could do the same thing. So we could go to the different veterinary clinics and then to, to Petsmart and Petco to get donations in order to, to fund the spay and neutering. And then, anyway, I, this latest issue has, says that they're gonna have the dog license outdate door-to-door. This is kind of off the topic a little bit, but I, I don't think it's in here. So I don't, I believe that the Spanish-speaking people of the city of Pasadena would not, are gonna be surprised when they do this door-to-door canvassing. Anyway, I think there's another way to, one, I think there's another way to achieve spaying and neutering, and number two, I don't believe that our city has dogs like that. And if they do, that people are going, the residents are gonna call and complain and have the, the problem resolved. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am. We turn to John Miller from San Diego. Oops, Joan Miller.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm representing the Cat Fancyers Association. I am the legislative information liaison for CFA. It's the largest registry of pedigreed cats in the world, and our mission is to preserve and promote the pedigree breeds of cats, and also to enhance the well-being of all cats. I think there is some fundamental problems with this, this ordinance, because it only impacts owned pets. And particularly, I want to talk about a couple of things that would relate to cats. We've had a great amount of success with neutering and spaying of pet cats. We have now nationally about 88 percent of our, of our cats that are owned and indoor cats are neutered and spayed. And in some parts of California, particularly in Santa Clara County and in San Diego area, we have about 92 to 94 percent. So that's quite a success. And that's happened because more and more cats are being kept indoors today. The problem that we have with cats is that only 3 percent of the outdoor, unowned cats or loosely-owned cats and feral cats are neutered and spayed. Many of them end up in the shelters, and that is why we really feel that, that this is where the target has to be in these cats. There is a recent study that I want to tell you about, and it was current research that indicates it from Santa Clara County. And I want to read what they, what the report says. With the start of the municipally-funded spay-neuter program, cat intakes declined 50 percent over 18 years. In only three years, the intakes declined an additional 25 percent, coinciding with the start of the Shelter-Neuter Return Project. And I won't go into that, but it is a very innovative project that's also been in, in Florida and a couple of other places, and will be, is, there's a national interest in this kind of project now. No other changes to animal control programs. Further, in 1993, 16 percent of owned cats had a litter prior to being spayed, while in 2005, when they redid the survey, less than one-half of 1 percent of owned cats had a litter prior to altering. The national studies show that 34 percent of all the households obtained cats as strays that come to the door. There are loads and loads of strays that are being fed by, by people. I think it would be, maybe interesting if there would be similar surveys that were done, so what was done in Santa Clara and San Diego, to show how many people are actually feeding unowned cats at their doorstep in Pasadena area. The, the ordinance will mean many people will relinquish these cats because they can't afford to alter them. The individuals that are, that are taking care of cats at their doorsteps need to have, have help rather than punishment, I feel. Now, you did mention that, that there might be some exemption for cats. Right now in the ordinance, there's no exemption for our pedigreeed show cats. We probably have very few pedigreeed cats, but there are some major problems with doing that with cats, and I, my time is up, I realize it, but I think that if you are gonna do that, that we would like to be able to give you some input on why that is be a problem with our pedigreeed cats. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Peter Keys from San Diego. Mr. Keys, welcome.
Sir?
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the privilege. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the privilege of addressing you on item nine. My name is Peter Keys. I am the president of the San Diego Cat Fancyers. We are active members of the Cat Fancyers Association International. We breed, raise, and show pedigreeed cats worldwide. Forty-one breeds of pedigreeed cats on seven continents. I wish to comment this evening on the subject of mandatory spay-neuter. Mandatory is the key word. The animal welfare proponents of mandatory or mandated spay-neuter say that there are too many born, therefore we should mandate spay-neuter. Their primary motivation is that, for supporting such an ordinance. Best Friends Animal Society, an international organization highly respected in the world of animals, conducted a survey of shelters in 1992 and determined that 15 million, this is a vast number of cats, a valid number of cats, 15 million cats were euthanized, which is a fancy word for killed, that year in shelters. The good news is that due to spay-neuter, breed rescue, and the No Kill Movement, and I emphasize spay-neuter and breed rescue, in conjunction with the No Kill Movement, that number is now down to less than 5 million, which is a horrendous number anyway, 5 million killed annually in shelters. That's a staggering number. Your local shelter certainly can provide information to you. Your shelter manager knows how many they have to kill. National experts are all in agreement. The problems of animals in the shelters and on the streets are complex. Your council member, Madison, touched on a major, major issue. Pit bull crosses, and we'll add to that chihuahuas. They are all over the place. Problem is in San Diego, it's the same one you have here. We have attacks in San Diego by pit bulls. We're trying to address the same issue you are addressing. There are too many homeless cats and loosely-owned strays on the streets. These cats do not have owners to comply with mandated laws. You can mandate all the laws in the world, but if people don't comply, there's a certain amount of energy wasted.
Mr. Keys, will you bring your statement to a close?
Yes, sir, I shall. Thank you. The real problem is unowned, free-roaming, feral, intact cats and their unwanted kittens who end up in the shelters. Proponents of Trap-Neuter Return are staunchly opposing mandated spay-neuter. Thank you for the privilege of addressing you briefly.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jenna Valencia.
Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Typically, our business owner, Dr. Dana Blyfer, would attend a meeting such as this, but unfortunately, she's out of town. As you can tell, the first row, we know a lot of these as being some of our clients at our facility. We have a practice down in Pasadena and one in Woodland Hills. I'm here just to address the issue. As Mrs. Bleacher mentioned, spaying and neutering animals at the early age of four months does not allow them to produce the hormones needed in order to fully develop. We, we see more increased cases in cancer, as well as joint and other diseases, or joint diseases, and as well as urinary tract infections in a lot of the female dogs. The problem here isn't spaying or neutering. The problem is educating our community. And being a part of the community, we do take pride. I'm not sure many of you have pets, but it is costly to get them spayed and neutered in a facility that has state-of-the-art equipment with a lot of options as how you want to spay and neuter. We have general, we have laparoscopic, we have chemical castration. So there are many ways, and in order for us to kind of get this problem under control, apart, our, our facility is willing to work with the community on maybe working on a low-cost day that we can offer the community and, you know, really get this under control. It's sad for our breeders that we have to, you know, stand up and fight for our pets. They're not able to speak their voice, but I think we should allow them to at least have the chance to fully develop before being spayed and neutered. So just something that was mentioned by the staff before I left was, the veterinary profession agrees that the animals not intended for breeding should be spayed or neutered. However, the decision of when to spay or neuter your dog or cat should be made on a case-by-case basis, and the decision should be made between the pet owners, the veterinarians, taking into consideration the pet's age, breed, sex, health status, intended use, household environment, and temperament. So, you know, passing a law such as this, passing laws such as breed discrimination isn't gonna solve the problem. The problem here is educating our community. So that's all the time I'll take tonight, and thank you. I was extremely nervous, my first time speaking publicly. So thank you, guys.
You did, you did a good job.
Thank you.
We turn then to Lois McDonald from Altadena.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us to address you today. My name is Lois McDonald. I am an Altadena resident, and I have owned show dogs for many years and have lived in the San Gabriel Valley all of my life. I'd like to address council member Madison's points. The statistic that states that male pit bulls produce over 70 percent of the attacks is true, but if you look into the demographics of that, most pit bulls that are kept in an aggressive mode are males. They are bred to be aggressive by those that sell them, and the females and any pit bull that they are trying to produce that shows timidity is put down. So you will only see those pit bulls with the owners that want an aggressive dog, and they will be male. You will not see females. When you see pit bulls that are up for adoption at the humane societies, those will tend to be your females, because if they have aggressive males, they will not be adopted out. So the demographics will lead to your aggressive number of pit bulls, not because pit bull is an aggressive breed. Second point that I'd like to make is that there are other breeds that have created fear in the communities in the past. Rottweilers, German Shepherds, Doberman Pinschers. I'm not hearing their names bandied about today because they also have a good reputation. Those of us that are in the fancy of purebred show dogs meet with the bully breeds frequently. And if you meet a bully breed that is bred responsibly with a responsible owner, you will never see a sweeter dog. I'd also like to address the issue of the mandatory spay, and I concur with the evidence out there that UC Berkeley School of Veterinary Medicine and Tufts University are also supporting the point that early spay-neuter will lead to arthritis, early arthritis, 100 percent increase in arthritis in the hip joints. I am a retired Air Force Colonel with 28 years of service. I have worked with working dogs, both here in the States as well in combat in the deployed setting. In the military, we do not spay and neuter our dogs when they are immature, if they are sprayed and neutered. The military feels that they are healthier and have stronger temperaments if they are left intact. So that is just a fact in military working dogs. It is training, it is It is training, it is good breeding practices, and it is education of the owners as well as the community that will prevent the horrendous attacks that we are all trying to prevent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. This is, the next speaker is Nancy Riordan.
Yes, thank you. I am also a resident of Pasadena. I also own show dogs and would like to concur with all that has been said thus far with respect to the health implications of early spay and neutering. I would like to point out that in all of my experience at dog shows, and I have been to many dog shows going back many years, you never, ever, ever see a problem with pitbulls at dog shows. And these are unaltered males. Oftentimes, the females, the bitches, are in heat. You simply do not see dog fights or aggressive dogs at dog shows. And the reason is because the dogs are bred carefully, socialized properly, and the owners are responsible. And it seems draconian to isolate a specific segment of a specific breed that has created enormous problems as a result of irresponsible ownership and turn around and impose these highly punitive measures on responsible dog owners. My understanding of the ordinance is that because my dogs compete, I'm entitled to an exemption from the mandatory spay and neuter. What I would like to clarify, because it was not clear in the language of the ordinance, it appears as though, in the event that one of my dogs were to get out inadvertently, which has happened, I tracked them down, fortunately, but if they wander into somebody's yard and that person takes them in and turns them over to the humane society, my understanding is that under the terms or under the language of the ordinance is written, before I could reclaim my purebred dog, I would have to agree to have that dog spayed or neutered. Perhaps somebody on the council can clarify that, that language, because I think that, as I say, is a draconian measure for someone who is otherwise a responsible dog owner and who simply happened to have the misfortune to have their dog get loose. Is there, I'm new at this. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question, but I would love to have that language clarified. What happens to somebody with an exemption if one of their dogs gets loose, or cats, I suppose, and then is turned, you know, picked up by the, by the, by animal control or picked up by a neighbor who takes it to animal control?
We'll try to respond to that when all of the testimony is finished.
Okay. And then the only other point that I would like to make with respect to the number of unclaimed dogs, particularly in shelters, according to the Centers for Disease Control, the United States imports annually over three hundred thousand puppies for shelters to adopt out. There is a shortage of adoptable dogs at animal shelters, according to the Centers for Disease Control, to the tune of three hundred thousand puppies a year imported into this country specifically to populate the animal shelters who in turn make money on adoption fees for families wishing to quote-unquote "rescue" a dog. So I would encourage the council to look into that statistics, statistic, and take that into consideration before propounding an ordinance based on the assumption that our shelters are full of unadoptable dogs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We turn to Ann Dove.
Good evening. A number of the points that I wanted to make, and I did provide a letter on Saturday, a number of the points have already been addressed, so I'm just going to focus on those that haven't been spoken to yet. First of all, I came across a memo from 2008 to the Public Safety Committee where the Director of the Public Health Department, in analyzing the potential of expanding the concept of mandatory spay-neuter for pitbulls to all breeds, provided in the memo that the Pasadena Humane Society would require a significant increase in their animal control contract in order to accommodate the increased staffing and operational costs associated with enforcing the ordinance. While there's a minimal number of legitimate breeders of pitbulls, there are a large number of show dogs of other breeds that would be submitted for exemptions. The process of verifying pedigree information, show dog registration, and inspecting breeding quarters is time-intensive. Extending the proposed mandatory spay-neuter ordinance to all dog breeds is feasible but would require an additional significant cost to the city. And the fact sheet said there'd be no fiscal impact to the city, so I'm not sure how those things relate to each other. Also, the, let me see here, I just want to skip over some of these. Also, the refaciation of any unaltered dog license really leaves open to exposure owners of dogs who have, dogs that are exempt, because there's a provision in there that states if there are two complaints within twelve months about a dog, that it could be, have that revoked, where it would have to be spayed or neutered. And neighbor disputes, animals are often used as a tool for neighbor disputes, so I would be concerned about that. Also, the one-strike policy, that any unaltered cat or dog would have to be spayed or neutered in order to retrieve it from the shelter, somebody already brought that up. But I think that that would have a significant impact to dog and cat shows that take place in Pasadena, because I know of people who have, like, bully breeds who won't travel to cities for competitions that have breed bans because they're fearful. So I think it would deter a lot of people from participating in those events, which actually have a pretty good economic and educational positive benefit to the community. Also, when I first finished grad school and could get my own pets, I had some rescue cats that I took to the Humane Society for their low-cost spay-neuter. And I just want to say that they have great programs. And based on all of the research about what programs are most effective, the research that's been done by the National Council on Pet Overpopulation Studies, the ASPCA's research, it all points to voluntary spay-neuter being the most effective tool. So I think by focusing on how to expand those services as well as their education and outreach programs, I think that those could be some more effective tools for addressing some of these issues instead of punishing responsible pet owners. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment that has been requested on this matter.
Move the staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, Jackie, from...
Can we hear from the Humane Society if they have any comments to make?
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Richard Campo. I'm Senior Vice President of the Pasadena Humane Society, and I wanted to first thank the City of Pasadena for introducing this ordinance, because just the conversation of this and bringing it up and talking about mandatory spay-neuter is part of the education. So we appreciate the city attorney coming up with the ordinance that we're discussing. In response to some of the questions, when it does come to cost, that was one that we discussed a lot with the city, an expansion of cost to the city. The Pasadena Humane Society does not charge the City of Pasadena per animal. So as our services expand to the residents of Pasadena, that's not necessarily put back onto the City of Pasadena in cost. Oftentimes, animal control contracts are on a per-animal basis. So for every animal we take in, then we charge back, that the Humane Society would charge back to the city. That is not our agreement with the City of Pasadena. So that's why we see that our expanded animal control efforts would not go back to the city itself. We encourage spay-neuter. We, in fact, have invested our own money and those of our donors in expanding the Humane Society. Very shortly, we will be opening a high-volume spay and low-cost spay-neuter clinic. We expect to be able to, at the beginning, do thirty surgeries a day, and we are always looking for subsidies to assist with helping people who can't afford even our affordable spay-and-neuter services. At the moment, we offer for pitbulls and chihuahuas, free spay-and-neuter, because they, those are the two breeds that we see, the largest population. In fact, when I left the shelter today, I counted fifteen chihuahua puppies. When I started working at the Humane Society nine years ago, those dogs would have been adopted the first day. Now, those puppies, I find it funny when people say, "We're importing puppies in." No, we're sending them out. We've sent, in the past three years, we've sent over seven hundred small-breed dogs across country, because we don't have the adopters here to take those animals. If we had somewhere that we could send pitbulls, if somebody would accept our pitbulls, we'd be sending them too. So we really try to work with overpopulation and feeling that mandatory spay-and-neuter will help us with population control. When it comes to cats, which, of course, there would be exemptions for responsible breeders and cat fanciers, but helping to define what ownership of a cat is would assist in the population problem. Also, looking at the population of cats that we do have coming in, the accidental breeding that happens with cats, because a lot of them are indoor-outdoor animals, or a lot of people, it's not really their cat. They feed it, it comes in at night, but it's not their cat, because they never made any effort to bring it into their home originally. So those are things that we feel that through this we can educate. And when it comes to enforcement, which was some of the questions that I read in the letters that came through today, we really see enforcement as something that we can do as an educational piece as we come in contact with people who have unaltered animals. So when we find people walking their dogs off-leash in the Arroyo, or, you know, running with their dog in Victory Park, that those are those people that we would stop and say, you know, "Here's your citation for being off-leash, and by the way, here's your citation for your animal being still intact." Can we work with you to fix that problem?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Ms. McAllister?
Under circumstance, we, it was discussed, if an animal is off-leash, picked up, taken to the Humane Society, how much would that cost, the dog owner, if that dog were, you know, in terms of the fees to retrieve it and the cost to have it spayed or neutered?
It would depend on the size of the dog, but we do start at thirty-five dollars for, to have the dog neutered before it's released. If it is a pitbull, we waive that fee, and oftentimes, we'll waive the fee for chihuahuas as well.
Okay, so how much for a large dog?
For a large dog, it can go up to about sixty dollars, but we do work with the resident, because we know not everybody has the money at the time. So we do work with our residents.
And then, what other charges would the dog or the pet owner have to pay?
The pet owner...
If the dog was, you know, taken into the shelter?
We do charge a fee for vaccination, which is about fifteen dollars, because we vaccinate all animals as they come in. We also charge a ten-dollar-a-day boarding fee. And then the State of California requires, if the dog is intact, a fifty-dollar fine. Each city also has a fine that they require in addition to that.
And we have one?
Yes.
And we have one? What's ours?
It's a progressive fine. I could get you those numbers. I'll email those to you.
Did we say fifteen dollars?
It's about fifteen to thirty...
Eighteen, thirty-six, and seventy-five, something like that. With a thirty in pounds, I think. Close.
So, but again, we want these animals back in their home. So we work with the member of the public to help negotiate. Like, if they agree to go ahead and have their animal neutered, then we waive the fifty-dollar state fine, because they've, they've agreed to have their animal neutered. Not everybody makes that agreement with us.
So it could cost up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a small dog?
It could.
And, okay, thank you.
I do have one question. What percentage of the dogs and/or cats that come into the shelter are already spayed and neutered?
I don't have that statistic available. We are seeing an increase in animals that are spayed and neutered coming into the shelter, except when it comes to, well, that and kittens. We are still seeing, our numbers have gone down. The two trends that we're seeing is, the one trend we're seeing is the cat season. Cats are seasonal breeders, and we're seeing the breeding season getting longer and longer, so we're getting litters of kittens for larger amounts of time. So we know, of course, that there's a large population of intact cats.
Can you speak to the requirement of it being by four months versus some other age, a year?
Yeah. And that would be something that the city could consider, is other stretch of time. We do, at the, at the Humane Society, we practice juvenile spays and neuters. So we, all of our animals are spayed or neutered before they're released, and that is at two pounds or, or four months, or two months. So we practice juvenile at the Humane Society. We know there's controversy with that, so if it's something that the city felt was, that needed to be looked at again, we would be amenable to that.
Thanks. We might still have another question or two before the evening's over. Mr. Masuda.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Wednesday, I received an email from a resident, and the title was "Attacking Dog." It says, "A pitbull mix." And that, and it, and it says, "Last Sunday, while walking our dog at Victory Park with my daughter, our dog was attacked by an unleashed, uncollared pitbull mix. I was bitten while trying to protect our dog and to separate the dogs. There were people playing volleyball, and they came to help. And it happened to be an animal control officer was there." So I reported this to our Public Works Director, and I think she contacted you...
Yes.
Because this resident was wondering if we can have some more signs at Victory Park. And thank you for agreeing to add some signs at Victory. But this is really disturbing, because, you know, what, what Councilmember Madison just mentioned about the, the child that passed away in, in Colton, it's fresh in our minds right now. So what would you say to this, this email that I received? Is this kind of a common thing that's happening right now?
Actually, looking at Victory Park, this is the first incident that we've had in eighteen months of this, and we spoke with the owner of the dog, and the dog accidentally got out of the home and so, and went into the park. This was not an owner who was taking the dog off-leash or had released the dog. So it sounds like that it was an accident. We are pursuing filing with, about the owner of the dog in question, and then the person who was attacked will be able to get the information from the city attorney, and if they want to pursue that. We do, as you said, we had an officer there on site doing a patrol, so one of our patrols through the city, and was able to take the information, find the owner very quickly.
Okay. And it also says that now the dog is back home and he's, the dog is quarantined. What's the next step?
The dog is quarantined right now, which is a ten-day hold to confirm that the dog does not have rabies. And when the dog is quarantined, there's signs posted on the home, and basically, at the end of the quarantine, if the dog is still alive, then it does not have rabies. So that is the basic quarantine. We monitor that. If we feel that they cannot keep the animal secure, then we will quarantine them at the Humane Society, and that's part of the services that we offer to the city. And then, we then file the case, and at that point, it's for the city prosecutor to take care of.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Robinson, you have a follow-on question?
I'll move it, Mr. Tony.
Mr. Tony.
He hasn't spoken yet.
Some of the correspondence, you've seen, I think, the same correspondence we have. There's one, one letter from the California Federation of Dog Clubs that makes a couple of assertions that I think would be helpful to, I don't know if there's a definitive answer, but it would be helpful to get your comment. One is that sterilization does not prevent roaming. One is that sterilization does not prevent roaming.
It's hard to come up with absolutes when you're talking about living creatures. So, it is something that can help prevent roaming, because if you have an unsterilized female that goes into heat, your unsterilized males are going to try to seek that animal out. So, in, in that sense, it's not going to work a hundred percent of the time, but it is one of those things that will help with the problems of roaming.
The other thing that was of interest to me was the, the assertion that punitive sterilization laws result in increased shelter intakes and deaths anywhere they are tried. Fewer people will reclaim their pets due to high costs. Los Angeles has seen a steep rise in shelter intakes since implementing its own mandatory spay-neuter law. So has Memphis.
And, and to that, I would also argue back that in Santa Cruz, where they have a mandatory spay and neuter, that they've seen a decrease in their population of intake, and part of that is through the ability to offer a low-cost alternative.
Well, I think the question, I mean, to me, that has to do with the, the income levels of the comparative places, Santa Cruz, did you say Santa Cruz? As opposed to LA? Because the, part of the issue is whether or not mandate, you know, the mandated surgery, and you say you work with the individuals, but it disproportionately punishes low-income families. I mean, that, that was another assertion.
And as a, and the advantage of us being a nonprofit who provides animal control services is that we do go after more grants to help subsidize the spay and neuter. This is, I mean, this is our mission, is to create a humane community, and so, as part of our mission, we, we're putting our money where our mouth is, that we will help out the residents as best we can, creating either vouchers or coming up with different plans and the ability to pay.
You've started your census, or I've forgotten what the outreach process...
And, our canvassing, we started, yes.
And, but this is not part of the subject yet.
No.
So, the canvassing right now is about identifying where there are dogs and whether or not they're licensed.
Correct.
And, and how is that going? Are you being greeted warmly or with suspicion, or, I mean, how's the reaction to that? And, and the reason I'm asking that question is that if this, if this passes, and this is an additional component of that, in addition to telling that pet owner, "Look, it's not, the dog's not licensed, you need to have a license, and by the way, you also need to have it sterilized, neutered,"
Mm-hmm.
how do you, how do you figure that'll go?
Well, I think one of the reasons we're seeing, and we are seeing success and, and being welcomed in Pasadena, and one of the reasons is our partnership with the City of Pasadena in, in publishing what we are doing and why we are doing that. So, our recommendation would be, is if this ordinance passes, that education is the number one, that we get that information out there, so people aren't surprised when the canvasser comes up and says, "Oh, and by the way, your animal has to be sterilized." That's a known quantity, and that we give people ample time to be able to be compliant.
Now, you're doing, you've started your canvas in East Pasadena.
Correct.
And you're gonna work west again? You're just simply gonna go east to west?
Yes.
And do you anticipate the same kind of reaction in different parts of the city?
We do, because we are, of course, announcing before, Pasadena is the largest city that we've done canvassing for, but we've noticed a, a consistent response to it, because again, it's, we use it as an educational tool, not as a punitive. So, we're going out being, you know, kind of your, your friendly enforcement.
Thanks.
Ms. McAston?
Um, thank you. I, I was, I was gonna ask some questions about the licensing too, but, uh, I was gonna ask... I'm sorry, I lost, I lost my train of thought. Someone else has a question.
We'll come back to you, Margaret, if you'd like, and we'll turn to Ms. Robinson.
How many instances of specifically pit bull attacks, but I guess you can widen that to any breed attacks, have the Humane Society log in the last, I don't know, three years, year?
We do have instances of dog bites where we do quarantine. In the past three years, we have not had any severe attacks. We have had incidences of dog bites requiring medical attention, but then again, we recommend that all dog bites require medical attention. I couldn't give accurate numbers...
More cell attacks, then?
Yeah. I couldn't give accurate numbers for the City of Pasadena specifically, because we do quarantine for all seven cities.
And, um...
Okay, I remembered mine, I remembered mine, Jackie, so I'll give you, you can have a minute while I... The, the question was about dog bites. So, what, what is the policy when there is, when there is an incident, aggressive dog, bite dog? What hap, what steps are taken?
It depends the circumstances of the bite. If the dog, the dog that bit is, was under the control of its owner, then it becomes a civil issue, then we file the paperwork, we take care of the quarantine, and then it's between the owner and the person, and the victim. If the dog was not under the control of the owner, then we will, we will file a recommendation with the city for, for further prosecution on that. So, it, it does depend on the circumstances. It also depends on the severity of the bite and if there's a history. If there's a history, or it's a particularly severe bite, we do not allow a quarantine at the home. We quarantine at the Humane Society, and then we will request a dangerous dog hearing. And with a dangerous dog hearing, the result of that is oftentimes either, there's a few options with that. That is, the, if the owner reclaims the dog, the dog cannot reside again in the city, and they have to prove that it is living somewhere else.
Is that through code enforcement hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, or that it would be euthanized, turned over to the Humane Society, oftentimes to be euthanized.
And then, Madam, City Attorney, do you prosecute, prosecute dog bite cases in the city?
Yes. Depending on the, the circumstances and what's referred to our office from the Humane Society or the Police Department.
Like, how many do you prosecute a year?
Hmm, hmm, there haven't...
Less than ten?
Yeah, we haven't gotten very many at all referred to us for prosecution.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I don't have any further questions for the Humane Society, but, you know, when you're prepared to have discussion, I'm, I'm ready for that.
I did have one final question. I just remembered. In the incident that Mr. Masuda just mentioned, was the dog spayed or neutered by...
You know, I don't recall that part. I, I do remember the details of it getting out of the home unattended, but I, I couldn't answer that right at the moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
A series of quick questions. What is the revenue forecast from this particular ordinance, if it passed, related to fees that will be collected? A manager or someone can provide them? Or, or have you considered that?
Well, from the...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, there's not a differential mentioned for the licensing, so the revenue of the spay and neuter would, of course, go back to the, the clinic that performed the surgery. When it comes to the revenue for citations from that, that, that at this moment is, is an unknown.
Oh, to be totally clear, so spay and neutering could be by any licensed entity that performs such?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Correct.
And then, and then secondly, Madam City Attorney, as it relates to criminal law, is there some lesser penalty than infraction?
Not that we would prosecute. We prosecute misdemeanors and infractions. There are administrative penalties and fines that go through code enforcement, et cetera, for certain types of violations.
And then, um... Are the Humane Society staff trained to use lethal force? Lethal force?
Our animal control officers?
On, on animals, yes.
On animals. We have the ability to use lethal force or do field euthanasias if necessary, but we're...
Specifically, not euthanasia in the context of taking an animal to your facility and euthanizing them, but in the open.
Yeah.
If you're encountering an aggressive animal, would you have the ability to use, are your officers trained to use lethal force?
Some of our officers are armed officers, and they are trained to use lethal force, but they are also trained to use non-lethal means of capture.
And what, and what relationship does the trained officer have with the Pasadena Police Department in terms of ongoing training in the use of lethal force?
When we qual, when we, our officers qualify for use of, of weapons, they qualify with the Pasadena Police Department.
Okay, and then, um, three, my question, I don't know exactly how to frame it, but I'm not a pet owner, but I know that oftentimes, pet owners look at their animals as an extension of their families, and I think some consideration, wherever council decides on this issue, has to be based on considerations of how some people view their pets. And I have friends who, friends and constituents, who view their animal particularly when that's truly, in their view, part of their family, as in fact, their family. And, um, it's very difficult for me to come to a conclusion that supports staff recommendation when I think of those constituents who view their dog or their cat as an extension of their family, and then with the limited knowledge that I have of a program in the city of Pasadena many, many, many years ago called the Human Betterment Foundation, and it sterilized African-American servicemen. Nor, I am not drawing a conclusion that this is anything similar to that. All I'm saying is, that's what comes to mind, because I'm familiar with that particular program under the guise of eugenics, and so, this is gonna be more than an easy vote for me tonight, and I appreciate your responses to all of the questions.
And I can say, as a Humane Society, we want pets to be part of the family, but we also have to acknowledge that ultimately, that they are, they are animals as well. So, they're, you know, they're animals that are part of the family, and a lot of times, we do have alignments with animals and humans. We, we like to anthropomorphize our animals, but we, we do need to recognize that, that they, while they are beloved members of the family, they are ultimately pets, animals, and our companions.
Thank you. We reserve the right to ask further questions.
Thank you.
But the public comment and the Humane Society's availability are, are completed, and question at this point are what are the wishes of, of the council? I would make a, a technical note that what we have before us tonight is an ordinance that reflects a policy approved by the council, and we all recall that ordinances are placed into contention for approval by the request of one person who introduces it. That request has been made by Mr. Madison, and in that regard, no second is required, and the ordinance is before us for consideration, subject to the deliberations that the council wishes to make.
Can staff just briefly speak to the enforcement and the penalty process?
Well, the enforcement would be handled by the Humane Society under our contract with them, and as to the penalties, perhaps maybe the city attorney's office.
The ordinance, as proposed, indicates that the first violation of the sections that are referenced in the ordinance would constitute an infraction, and any subsequent violations would be misdemeanor violations.
I'm sorry, what page are you reading from?
That's page, the last page of the ordinance. In the agenda packet, it's listed as page forty-two.
Oh.
Section, the six point zero nine point zero seven zero.
So, by stating the first violation, does that mean if, I mean, can a neighbor report their neighbor by saying, you know, "I suspect their pet is spayed or neutered"? Does that constitute an infraction, or how do you get to the infraction?
No, a conviction would be an infraction. Just an allegation or a complaint or a statement would not const, it wouldn't be the first violation until it's been determined to have been one, either an admission of guilt or determination by the court.
I guess my concern is with regard to enforcement and those individuals or members of the community that, for whatever, you know, for financial reasons, can't afford the low-cost spay or neutering. I mean, thirty-five dollars to some people is not a lot of money. To some people, you know, it is, and so, in that respect, how will families or individuals prove, so to speak, that they can't afford it if it's not a question of, you know, that they don't want to do the spay or neuter, it's just that they can't for financial reasons?
I think that would be a matter that they would work with the Humane Society on. Obviously, they have, they don't have to go to the Humane Society to spay or neuter. They can do it with any reputable provider, but if they are interested in the services that the Humane Society provides, including the low cost, or in some case, potentially an outright subsidy, they would work with the Humane Society. The goal is to achieve compliance, which means spayed and neutered animals, it's not the goal to generate revenue, and the city doesn't receive revenue from charging people for it.
Thank you.
Ms. McAston? Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my position on this is, I, I completely support trying to address the pit bull and overly aggressive dog situation. I, I'm with Steve. I wish, I, I think we ought to be putting more of our efforts toward trying to be able to do breed-specific legislation in the city, and I know that's not gonna be popular with a lot of people. We've talked about it before, there'll be a lot of opposition to it, but I guess I would rather take the heat for that than support this, because this just doesn't, it's overly broad and doesn't solve the problem we're really trying to get at. I mean, I understand it's, it's the best we could do to try and address the, the problem we want to solve, but this isn't gonna solve it. And I think that what we ought to do, instead of this, doing this right now, is, I'd like to see the Humane Society complete the canvassing, the licensed canvassing, because I think that's gonna turn out to be a little bit more, less of a happy event than it's been so far. I mean, I'm... I mean, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear it's going so well, but my feeling is, is as, you know, they continue to go door-to-door, more and more people are going to feel like, "What is government doing at my front door now, telling me to license my dog"? And to put a spay and neuter ordinance on top of that, I mean, I think it's just, it's just too much. And I would, I would rather see the Humane Society complete the licensing canvassing initiative and use that as an opportunity to tell people about their free spay and neuter clinic, or about opportunities that are available, you know, they can mention that it's encouraged or whatnot, but I think it's true that people with problem dogs, they're not going to license them, and they're not going to spay or neuter them. This just isn't going to get at the, at the dog population that we want to reach. And so, while I admire the work of the Public Safety Committee, and I do support trying to address this problem, I just don't think this, I just don't think this is going to do it, so I can't support it.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm okay, Mayor.
Mr. Tornick?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think Margaret has got it exactly right. I mean, I, as I said at the outset, I understand the motivation, I fear the terrible incident that, that we read about, but in an effort to, to solve that problem, we have to come at it in an indirect way that I think is overbroad and does overreach. I'm persuaded by the correspondence we've received, I mean, it's late, but it's here, from responsible organizations and individuals, you know, the California Federation of Dog Clubs, and Carpoc, who we heard from, the American Kennel Club letter I thought was very persuasive, the American College of, I can't pronounce what it is, but the Veteran Air, what is it?
Veteran Air.
Okay, thank you. And some individuals. I found Nancy Leon's letter very persuasive, I found Ann Dove's letter very persuasive, who was here tonight and gave testimony. And frankly, most persuasive was a letter from Jan Dykema, who concludes, "Whether policymakers intended or not, mandatory spay-neuter laws are perceived by the public as especially oppressive and drive a wedge between the public and animal service departments. This perception reduces dog licensing rates, reduces dog licensing income, reduces return-to-owner rates, increases costs, and kills more dogs." I mean, I think that this is an intrusive, overly intrusive piece of business, and I think Margaret's exactly right, as usual, in terms of having, having the Humane Society complete this ambitious canvas, use it as an educational tool and process, which I think is going to get some pushback, particularly as the, as it moves west across the city. And, and I think then we can talk about how to, how to move toward addressing some of these issues, but featuring the educational aspect that everyone seems to think is, is most effective, including the Humane Society, and building that into this, this licensing program that's already underway. So, I, I won't support the proposal, the ordinance.
Mr. Madison?
Well, you know, again, my view is, we didn't start out on this path, we were sort of forced there by the state law. I do think we may be letting the perfect be the enemy of the good now, because anyone that you talk to, I mean, at our Humane Society, we euthanize thousands?
Thousands.
Thousands of animals every year. So, I think this is an opportunity for Pasadena to be a leader, and, and I think, yes, we have a small group of very responsible pet owners and breeders who have a particular perspective on it, but by and large, that's not what, that's not the behavior people are engaging in. And, you know, public policy involves balancing interests. So, if we don't do this, we're not going to be doing anything to address any of the problems that we've heard about in this regard. So, I think it's a chance for us to be a real leader. I think John mentioned the use of lethal force, and that's another not insignificant point, that our police officers have to shoot dogs from time to time, and I'm sure it's anecdotal, but I know they've had to shoot pit bulls. Those are inherently dangerous situations. I mean, I just, I'm really feeling like we need to take some action here. So, I'll ask for a vote on the, on the ordinance, and I think it'll be unfortunate if Pasadena, you know, has, has to be sort of forced into apathy.
Pardon me, Jackie. Press reading.
No second is required. It has been extremely helpful to have both the written testimony that has come in in the last week, and the thoughtful testimony that's been presented tonight. It's a close question because as even the introducer of the ordinance concedes, we're doing this ordinance because a more direct reference to the most difficult problem in this area is not achievable under, under California state law. So, it's a close question. I'm, at the moment, attracted to the suggestion from Margaret McAston that we don't vote this down necessarily, but that we hold it and, and consider it at a proper time in the future, when we have the benefit of the information that will be necessarily experienced and gathered on the caucus, on the survey that will be, that is underway from the Humane Society.
In that case, Mayor, I'll withdraw my introduction for that purpose. That's the direction that we'll give staff. I would also, with council's approval, ask that it go back to ledge policy so that we can, once again, have a discussion about whether we ought not to ratchet up our voice in Sacramento about being able to address this, you know, in light of these recent attacks.
More direct.
Steve, I think Councilmember, or Assemblymember Holden's going to be here in the next month or so, isn't he, for his annual visit?
October twenty-first.
Sure.
Good opportunity to mention that to him, then.
I understood that your, your action, Steve, was to withdraw your introduction.
Correct.
And suggest or join with the thought that this matter be deferred at least some period of time. Is six months the right time?
I think it depends on the timeline for the canvassing.
The Legislative Policy Committee would consider proposed state legislation. Public safety would not consider the legislation, but rather the proposed local regulation of ordinances or, or other ways to deal with this on a local basis.
Let's see what legislative policy comes, it comes up with, can come up with within the next six months, and then we'll see how the canvassing goes, and if it's appropriate to bring this back at that time. Do we have flexibility, or does it, does the time need to be set right now?
I don't think the time has to be set right now, but it might be more reassuring to those who were counting on action by the city in this direction to have some idea that it's six months or twelve months.
Six or nine months, is that reasonable?
We can conform to that timeline. I heard the Humane Society say six months would get them pretty far along with canvas.
Why don't you bring it back when the canvassing is complete, or six months, whichever comes first?
And meanwhile, the question that Mr. Madison has identified as, as one that would be most rewarding to solve, that is, a change in the law of California with respect to prohibiting action against specific breeds of animals or of dogs. We'll go to the Legislative Policy Committee at the next meeting.
I do have a follow-up question for the Humane Society of the canvassing. Are you having actual conversations with residents, or are you just going off the visual of, "I see a dog in the backyard", and that's a tick mark for the count?
Mayor, City Council, Steve McNaul, President of the Humane Society, we're doing all of the above, but the word has gotten out about the licensing. I mean, our office is inundated every day, so much so that now we have to create another office for the citizens coming in to purchase their licensing, which is very refreshing. So, that's, that's absolutely wonderful. But yes, we are, our canvassers are going door-to-door, they're being received perfectly, and I think it's a reason, the reason is because we are marketing pet licensing differently now than in the old days, where it's state law, you have to have it, and so on and so on. The benefits of having your dog licensed today are just, it's wonderful, because if your dog is licensed, it's, if it's hit by a car or injured, it's going to get free veterinary care until the owner is located, in any hospital in Pasadena, including the Humane Society. That's a big, big benefit. The other part is that the animals are staying shorter times in the kennels, and they're going back to the owners quicker because they can retrieve them quicker, and I think the citizens like that. So, we do have our thumb on the pulse when it comes to the licensing and the microchipping. So, doubled up with the microchip and the licensing itself, pets we know are going to go back to the owners quicker, are going to stay out of our shelter and other shelters, and it's going to be wonderful.
I guess I'm just wondering, with regard to this specific conversation about spaying and neutering, might you add to the list of questions at the door, you know, is your dog already spayed and neutered, spayed or neutered, and if not, why essentially?
Well, we asked that, because the city, the city has imposed a license fee break. If your animal is sterilized, the license is half the cost. So, the incentive, that's an incentive to get your pet sterilized. Now, we've kind of segued from Councilman Madison's issue with the bully breeds and such, but our focus is on pet overpopulation. Seventy percent of the cats that go into public shelters in the United States are euthanized, just because there's no ownership to them, and it's indiscriminate breeding and irresponsible pet ownership. But when we, I've been at the shelter for thirty-three years, and we used to walk through the shelter and go, "This one's going to live, this one's going to die, this one's going to live, this one's going to die". It's changed a little bit, but not a lot, because we want to see a humane community where there's zero euthanasia of placeable animals in all of our shelters, not just us, but with LA County and so on. That's why we're all working in collaborative effort to have the same goal of zero euthanasia of placeable animals, by public education, spay-neutering, and the mandatory spay-neutering is working. It does work in all of our communities, and that's, that's just the way it is. But I have to tell you, you have to come down sometime to the shelter, six o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, you see a basket of kittens there. My cat had kittens, I wanted my kids to experience the miracle of birth, so here they are. Please take care of them and find them a home. Can only do so much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sorry.
And as you sit down, let me say congratulations on a successful Wiggle Waggle Walk. I know I saw you out there.
Yeah, wasn't that wonderful? And you know what? I bet you, I bet you beans, apple, butter, there were eighty percent, or ninety percent of those dogs were sterilized, and they're all having a great time out there. I mean, there were, we had, we had some feuds with people, parking and so on, but no problem with the dogs whatsoever. So, those that participated, thank you for coming out, it was a great, great event.
Steve, wait one sec, may I, Mayor, just a question? So, I mean, Steve, you're the expert, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but you owe us your honest opinion. If you could, would you like to see us adopt a mandatory spay-neuter?
Yes, absolutely. And the reason is, and there's, there's enough variances with the breeders and, and, you know, the, all the other, the show folks and so on, and the hardship cases. We can, we can accommodate those, that's our mission. That's what's near and dear to our heart, and we're subsidized by our donorship that comes forward because they believe in it also. But the idea that you want to see that, that pet population get under control, the only way to do it is education, spay and neuter, and have programs created to assist the community in solving animal problems. And so, without a doubt, I see it time and time again, I was at a state humane board of directors meeting this morning with, with all the leaders in, in the state talking about the Hayden Law, and what's going to happen when the Hayden Law gets refunded, or what Governor Brown's going to do with it. And I have to tell you, there are a lot of innovative, young people coming into the humane environment that's going to, they have good ideas and new ideas that are, pardon the, pardon the expression, but they're on the cutting edge of solving animal problems. And community cats, for example, the T and R trap neuter and return programs are extremely successful, but you have, but, but the foundation is pet sterilization. You have to have them so they cannot breed, the unwanted animals, and that's, that's just the bottom line.
Can I just ask the city clerk of the speakers tonight that spoke on the issue? Were there any, I think there were some Pasadena residents, but how many were Pasadena residents? I heard several people from San Diego here, but...
There were four cards that put a Pasadena address.
And out of how many?
Out of eight. There were three from LA, one from LA and two from San Diego, and then there was one from Altadena.
I don't know, I'm persuaded by the experts, and again, we didn't set out necessarily on this course, but what happened over the course of the Public Safety Committee hearings, and one city council hearing, right, because we've already adopted this as a policy, was this is what the, the best practices are now, so...
I think a circumstance that sometimes affects one's judgment about when to introduce a new regulation by government is the fact that we're proceeding with this licensing regulation at the present time, and while it's going well so far, it's nice to hear that, and we hope it continues to go well, it's conceivable that the public acceptance of this particular proposal would be reduced by combining it with the other. So, there was my introduction, and I think the consensus of the council is clear with respect to the six months and to the consideration of a legislative initiative from legislative That completes the item that we've had under consideration now, and we thank, once again, thank all those who took time to share their views and their concerns with the council as part of our deliberations.